Decide.
They are deferring, they're deferring.
Jerry, 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 this is an agenda item.
Fine.
And if you'd like to make a motion.
Right, fine.
Make a motion.
Okay.
And you'll get a second and then we'll vote on it.
Fine. I would like to make a motion to allow that rental to, to allow a rental, period.
Do you want to have a second?
What was the motion?
The motion is to allow the rental.
Which unit?
Uh, unit, what's the unit number, Francis?
Orleans two U.
Orleans two U.
What did the lawyer call it? Sympathetic, not sympathetic.
Equity.
Equity.
I would, I would like to make a comment before we vote, if you don't mind. This is one of the few things that Francis and I disagree on. And I'll give you my thinking and then we'll open it up again for discussion, because I think this is very important. This unit owner. Yes, it has been seconded, Mark. This unit owner lost her tenant because he was a lousy tenant. And decided that if this ten, excuse me, if this tenant was a good tenant, she would be allowed to roll over the lease. Because she chose to replace this tenant, according to Francis' interpretation, that this individual no longer had that right, she went to the back of the line. My understanding is, this is not right. You do not lose the right because you lose a tenant. You maintain that right. And this is what Chris told me this afternoon, and I believe this is what he said tonight. So, this is my comment, any other comments?
This so-called lousy tenant, uh, who, who was the realtor that put the lousy tenant in? Are you familiar?
What did he say?
I want to know.
There's no points.
There's not?
It wasn't me.
Not upon, we're not discussing real.
Terry, how would that be relevant?
I just have one question, does this tenant, is she in a hardship situation? I mean, what's the hardship?
Well, the hardship was...
I know the, I know the unit owner involved. This is, she's living in one unit, this is her second unit, she bought for investment purposes. Uh, the rent from this pays the mortgage. If she get, if she does not get the rent, she's going, she's going to, she will have no choice financially, but to give it up, basically, lose it to foreclosure.
So she said.
So she said. My own point of view on this particular thing, I think this is a good test case that deals with the equity issue, the fairness issue. It's already a unit on, it's already a rental on the rolls, there's a span of time. I think this is a good test case. You see if somebody doesn't like it and takes action against us, I think it's a good one. So, I'm going to be voting for the approval of this particular tenant.
Marvin, excuse me, we're just going this way. Marvin, this is not a test case. This is a case that we're voting on based on fair, equal thinking. It's not a test. This is not a precedent. We're making a decision based on this one individual. If she had a tenant and she was renewing that lease, she would be allowed to keep that tenant. What she's doing is replacing that tenant with another tenant, and that should be absolutely fine. She is part of the 25% club, cut, club.
That's your point of view, I...
Thank you.
Charlie, what unit is this?
Two U, or unit number?
Orleans.
That's to be, it should be E two N.
Orleans two U.
What, that's like, what I'm thinking of, the circumstances.
It's Varnum, Orleans two U.
It's, 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 it's Ms. Varnum. Okay. There's a motion on, uh, and it's been seconded. We're going to take it to a vote.
Mr. Scham.
Yes.
Can I make an amendment?
An amendment to what?
To, to the motion.
No, you can't.
Why not?
Because it's out of order.
No, he can, he can operate.
Can he? Go ahead, Mark, sorry. I was told you couldn't, but go ahead.
I think the exact same principle applies to the unfortunate Mr. Coleman.
Right, well, let's do one at a time. The next one we can, Mr. Coleman. So, let's take care of this one, and then do Mr. Coleman next. Why muddy the waters?
They claim their hardship, everybody's going to know it.
Everybody's got hardship.
Just what he said, it's a, it's going to open the floodgates, and, and we're not going to be sticking to our con, to dogs. And then we're going to get some...
It seems to me that if you...
We have no means test in place to see if they truly are...
Wait, wait, I have, I have the floor, thank you. It seems to me that if you lose a tenant, the rent rolls go down one. If you then put a new tenant in, we're back to ground zero. So, this is all moot stuff, and I think we've got the fairness thing here. I think it's absolutely obvious that we should have these people be allowed. It's through no fault of their own, the right thing to do is to do the right thing and damn the torpedo full speed ahead. That's my feeling.
Okay, but I'm waiting, I'm waiting for my opportunity to rent my, to rent an apartment. Now the opportunity presents itself, and you're saying, "No, I can't."
You have a hardship, just say the same thing, you're going to lose your place and, and less...
This is...
We're going to review.
Yes, I'm saying, I'm saying there are different situations.
Terry, this is not, this is not the case here. The case is, is that the lady had a tenant. If she had a tenant, and the lease expired, she would have the right to roll over that lease, correct, Terry?
No.
I mean, no.
If it's a good tenant.
It's the same tenant.
But there's a big gap.
It doesn't matter the gap, she does not lose the right of being a member of the 25% gap club.
Why not?
Why not?
If, if...
We have to bring him back in.
Okay, look, look, we have differences of opinion. We have, okay, Kurt, sorry. We're, we're going, the board is going to vote on this, the board is going to vote on this. Sorry, Francis, we are going to vote on this, there's a motion and a second, and, okay, go ahead.
There's nothing you can do.
All right, Kurt, Kurt, let's get on with this.
I do feel, I, I feel sorry for anybody who's having problems economically. But I do feel that you establish a precedent. And, uh, the, you, you put, you have the board playing King Solomon. I, I think that the idea of the committee to resolve the problem, one way or the other, in a rational manner after discussion, was the right way to go. This is an emotional decision, and, uh, and I don't think that we should be making emotional decisions. And as far as the other gentleman is concerned, I don't believe he ever rented his apartment. So, he wouldn't be under the same situation as Ms. Varnum.
He had a, he had a renter for four years.
Oh, he did? I didn't remember that.
He had a renter for four years, the rental left, and now he's under the gap again.
Oh, okay, I didn't know that.
What are you voting for, Francis?
Okay. We each expressed, we each expressed our opinion.
General has been...
We each expressed our opinion, now we're going to go to a vote.
Well, now I make a motion to table. Now it's not too late.
No, it's never too late.
It's never too late.
We've done it to the million.
There's a motion on the table to, uh, the table.
Table the, yeah, uh, the rental of, oh, oh, of, it's, the motion to table the rental of Orleans two U.
It's got to be seconded.
Is there a second?
All second. Collette seconded.
Collette seconded.
Oh, I did.
Any discussion, or, no, it's a discussion on the motion to table. Uh, Marvin Towne?
Yes. Mr. What? Yes, the second.
To table.
Yes, to table.
Francis Moserou, yes. Mark Richman?
No.
Michael Schenckel?
No.
Collette Goslin?
Yes.
Yes. Gerald Mier?
No.
No. Terry Jisigny?
Yes.
Sharon Tropicium?
No.
No.
Charles Fitzpatrick?
No.
Motion to table failed by a vote of five to four. So, now we come to the vote on the motion itself. This is the motion to allow the rental of Orleans two U.
Or Mr. Coleman.
No.
Not mine, fire.
No, there's only one.
That hurt me.
Orleans two U. Marvin Towne?
Yes.
Francis Moserou, no. Mark Richman?
We're voting to allow her...
To allow the rental of O two U.
I vote yes.
Michael Schenckel?
Yes.
Collette Goslin?
No.
Gerald Mier?
Yes.
Terry Jisigny? I didn't hear you, sir.
No.
Sharon Tropicium?
Yes.
Yes. Charles Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Motion passed. Five votes, six to three.
Now, in the same, same vein, in the same vein, I think we should take up the other subject of Mr. Coleman that Mark has brought up. I gave Francis his letter, I just don't know whether Francis has seen the letter or not.
Jerry, could you come up here and articulate to us, please?
Ah, that's all right, the letter's right here.
Yeah, I know, but I'd like him to articulate to the rest of us. Because I don't know the story.
You haven't gotten the letter in that case.
I didn't know.
Okay, "Dear Board Member, My name is Kevin Coleman, unit owner Heidelberg two Y. The unit has been rented since 2005, in December of '11. Lost a tenant after four years. Received notice that due to a form I signed in 2006, I'm unable to rent the unit. I was also informed that the benign form signed in 2006 stays with the property. I'm sure I don't need to engage the board regarding the disastrous nature of the current real estate market in South Florida. My inability to rent the unit will pose an enormous financial hardship on me, like many others in South Florida. I am upside down on the mortgage. I moved up to the Washington DC area for career considerations, and the DC area is an expensive area to live. Should I be unable to rent the unit, I'll be forced to foreclose on the unit because I cannot afford to pay the mortgage without generating rental income to cover the bill. I have faithfully paid my monthly maintenance fees one time since moving into the unit, and I've maintained an excellent payment history. I respectfully request the board reconsider their decision and allow me to rent the unit. Additionally, I think the board needs to reconsider the policy of allowing a certain number of rental units. I believe that the cost of a foreclosure will prove more expensive to the association when the option to rent is a viable alternative and is in both our best interest. I have a prospective renter waiting your decision. Thank you for your time, respectfully, Kevin Coleman."
I have articulated.
I have, I need the unit, now, but please hear it.
The unit is H two Y, one bedroom, H two Y. And I'm assuming that this letter was sent to all board members.
I got it.
I got it. I don't know why.
Yeah, I probably got it, I just didn't get it printed, that's all.
Yeah.
Is there a motion on the table?
I make a motion to, to let, uh, unit H two Y, uh, continue renting the unit. I second.
Any, any discussion?
Just a clarification. Again, this is not a new unit going from owner occupied to rental. It is a unit that has been rented, and for whatever circumstances, there's been a month and a half gap. And now he wants to fill the space. Is that accurate?
Yep.
He used to live there.
And he voted against the cap. Don't forget to put that in there. He voted against the cap.
Did you put that in?
It doesn't matter if he rented or not. He's grandfathered in because he was a member of the 25% cap club.
No.
And he does not lose that right.
No, he's not grandfathered in because, because while he was grandfathered in, if he hadn't have signed, didn't sign the amendment.
He has signed it.
The fact that he signed the amendment makes him, because it's a convoluted rule, and if he understood what he signed, he probably received the papers, he figured he's a good citizen, he's going to sign it.
Thank you, Terry.
He's not grandfathered in. No, he's not, I, I totally agree.
Again.
No, he was, he was grandfathered, but he gave up his grandfather.
Yes.
He gave it up. He was grandfathered, but he gave it up. And I think that that is a problem.
Just let's vote, it's 9:30, guys.
Okay, we're, uh, let's, uh, okay, any opposition? Any opposition to the motion?
Yes.
Okay, we need a roll.
Marvin Towne?
Yes.
Francis Moserou, no. Mark Richman?
Yeah.
Michael Schenckel?
Yes.
Collette Goslin?
No.
Gerald Mier?
Yes.
Terry Jisigny?
No. No.
Sharon Tropicium?
Yes.
Charles Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of six to three.
And which unit is this?
Not a violation of the document.
H two one.
We're not violating the documents.
Yes, we are. You're entitled to make a vote. You don't need any time. Make the commentary before the vote, not after the vote.
We are moving on. We have a report, go ahead.
Excuse me, please.
Yeah.
So, with the exception of, with the exception of Orleans two U, could the Sales and Lease Committee have a motion to approve their reports and have the actions approved by the board?
I so move. Second. I so...
I so move.
Second.
Mark Richman, second. Any opposition? Motion carried. We'll move on to the affirmation of suspension of rights of delinquent owners. I'm sorry, I forgot you again, Michael. We need a report on the Water Conservation Committee, make it brief, please.
I'll keep this short, as I can. We've, uh, I've been down this road already once or twice, and...
Michael, use the microphone.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Ellen?
Yeah, we, uh, water conservation and water damage prevention has been, uh, kicked around for about three and a half years now. As George told you in his maintenance report, it's becoming chronic. Two or three floods a week?
Yes, sir.
Well, when I first started campaigning to prevent these floods, there was only one a week. So, obviously, it's getting worse, and our plumbing is getting older. Now, this is what happened. Yeah? And then everybody I talked to says they had, they've had one recently, Jerry had one recently. Anyway, uh, so, so we're having a water conservation and water damage flood prevention, I'm calling it an expo, as an exposition. Uh, there, there are some programs available for free rate toilet rebates. Simulus money administered by the county and the city that will give you up to $200 rebate for your toilets. And, so, we had a committee meeting on the 13th. Uh, committee meeting on water conservation flood prevention, Monday, the 13th. There were recommendations that came out of this meeting that we are presenting tonight. One of them is to, I wish Marvin was here, because it was his idea, to hire a, uh, water conservation or water leaking engineer, you know, a plumbing engineer, who can actually, you know, give an MRI to our pipes and see why some buildings use 5,000 a month and some use 3,500. The first analysis will be from those records from the water department, because they show a lot of discrepancy, and the buildings have, each have 75 units, and there can be a 12, 15, $100 difference in, in use. Well, we'll, he will determine this, and actually, supposedly, I wish Marvin was here, is going to do it for free. Uh, just home our water bills. They, we have graphs that show the difference by month and by building. And, uh, we have 13 water meters in the village. Uh, the 11 residential buildings, and there's two in the clubhouse. And, uh, so, the, the program is based on trying to get people together, sign up for these free toilets, and to register to have their apartments inspected for potential water damage. Let's give you the, uh, short version. We're working, right now, we're working on getting this display ready. The mayor of Lauderdale has offered to come to this meeting. He is, his big pet project is energy conservation, so he asked if he could bring some literature regarding energy conservation. I know the future for us here in South Florida is going to include solar, solar panels. And the engineering, and the prices, and the federal rebates are coming in line to make this possible in the near future. Like, we're going to, you know, I know I'm planning on adding energy conservation to this, but since he, he asked, but why not? So, we have representatives from the city of Lauderdale, representatives from the county, to, they're going to walk us through, register, if you want to get a free toilet, all you have to do is be an owner who is a snowbird or a regular residential owner. It's not, unfortunately, for investors at this time. Uh, but, they will pay up to $200 for two toilets, which can include the shut-off valve, the water line that goes to it, and we'll be displaying all these things at this mini exposition in the clubhouse. Uh, we're setting up a display, uh, of three toilets, uh, chair height round, a chair height elongated, and our original 1979 special, six gallon special. So, there, you know, and it's going to be displayed in the clubhouse in just a few days. George is helping with putting this together. And we're going to have people sign in. It's, there are two parts to this which were recommended by the committee. And that was to, is Marvin coming there?
Yeah, he's, he's...
That's, uh, as Marvin suggested, we are going to begin to employ an engineer water leak study. And secondly, we recommend and we approve, uh, this exposition to raise awareness of these ideas and the availability of not only two free toilets, but the city is bringing 100 showerheads and faucet aerators, totally free, uh, which will help us save some water. Uh, so, this, this approach to water conservation flood prevention has been coming a long time, I'm a little too familiar with it. Hopefully, this time, the way we're going to implement it, it will be widely accepted. I know in the past, it was really very well anticipated, and 90% of the owners agreed with going forward with it. So, this is a bit, you know, part of a, uh, a, a letter that will be going out.
Don't read the letter, Michael. Don't read the letter.
Keep it a secret?
No, no, you're going to deliver it, we're already running at 9:30, Michael, please.
I think this is important enough. How much did I save you this week, Charlie, by making a recommendation? Huh? Can I talk?
Read it, Michael.
Okay. Water usage in the village has reached an all-time high of $615,000 for 2011. This expense comes out of all our pockets in our monthly maintenance. Another costly water-related problem or issue is floods, leaks, and, uh, as a result of old water heaters, air conditionings, drains clogging, and other preventable leaks. On February 28th, there will be a water conservation exposition with representatives from Broward Water Partnership and from the city of Lauderdale. Volunteers will be on hand to help sign up IV residents. Owners and snowbirds are up to $200 per person for rebates in water conservation toilets. Toilets can account for 30 to 35% of the water used in your home every day, depending on how old your current toilets are. Many toilets in IV are original pre-1980, and use five to six gallons per flush. The new high-efficiency toilets perform every bit as well and that old water-guzzling thing you have in your bathroom now. But they do use 75% less water. And that's not all. Bring your ID card to the expo and receive a free water conserving showerhead and free faucet aerator. Don't miss this opportunity, help reduce our growing water expense, please attend. Enjoy snacks and beverages while we help sign you up to receive these rebates. While implementing these improvements will not take long, the saving will last for years. Please come. 7:30 in the evening on February 28th, which would be next Wednesday.
Tuesday.
Coffee, uh, Tuesday, it was originally going to be Wednesday. Tuesday, coffee and cake, and perhaps some other surprises. Uh, Marvin, you weren't here when I mentioned some of our recommendations from our committee meeting, which included, uh, a water engineer who is going to analyze, you want, you want to...
I'll, I'll respond to that.
Okay.
I spoke to the, both the South Florida Water Management District and to the city of Lauderdale, neither of which, uh, offers an inspection of, of water use. We would have to go commercially to a plumber, um, a water engineer, or something, we'd have to pay for it out of pocket. I called a few, uh, plumbers. I've met with one, I'm going to meet with another one tomorrow. And both have, on a preliminary basis, have said they need at least, um, a year, if they can get up to three years' worth of water bills, so they can analyze the increase in money spent and in water usage. Um, and that, after they take a look at the property and get those documents, then they'll give us a proposal of what it would cost for a very thorough examination to determine where our water is going.
Jerry had a good idea regarding this and how to set up. Jerry, you, yesterday you mentioned how to, by building, the, uh,
No, just a form, a form that I use for properties, that I'm responsible for the water. And it gives you, by year, it gives you, uh...
By building, by...
A month.
We have it by month and by building.
Yeah, that's what to give to this, to a water engineer, and, uh, and he can spot, uh, he can spot problems from that very easily, very clearly. Have you, have you worked on that format?
Yes, yeah, we've been working on getting it going. Marvin has actually been speaking to...
I'll give you a copy of mine.
And the initial part is written.
Yeah, the initial look, the initial review of the documents, and in the first walkthrough of the property is no charge. But after they take a look at the documents, then they'll give us a proposal as to, you know, whatever the next step is. I would also recommend getting Mayor Caplan involved. He's familiar with international villages, we dealt with him directly, and I would get him involved.
You can speak with him on the 28th, he'll be here.
Oh, he'll be here, oh, great, okay, yeah, yeah.
He remembers it, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, what I would want to...
So, we have three recommendations from our water conservation committee, and, uh, they are to approve the, uh, the expo event, to approve the inspection of units for, uh, flood prevention and water conservation. And the third part is, uh, to have a, an water engineer try to analyze where we're losing all this water.
Thank you, Michael, that's terrific. Is there, are there any questions on the board, from the board? From the audience?
Washers and dryers.
I'm sorry?
Can you add washers and dryers that are in many of the units? Don't you think that's a tremendous saving?
Uh, add what? To what? When we do the inspections of every unit, Jeffrey?
Well...
All right? But that's part of the recommendation?
We're only there for one reason.
Yeah, one reason, we're there for one reason, and that is to, uh, to take a look at any water leakage.
So, you don't care about people that have washers and dryers?
We're not going into the units to inspect.
Don't ask, don't tell. But hot water heaters are serious.
That's France Town.
Want me to make a motion to, uh, the recommendations?
I make a motion to accept the recommendations of the Water Conservation Committee.
And what are those recommendations?
Give her the, give her the...
Three things. They are to, uh, to seek, we have, we have allocated for the first time
Michael, Michael got to, uh, wire...
$5,000 for water conservation in our 2012 budget. So, Marvin suggested some of this money, a way to get our, the greatest return on that money, would be use at least some of it to hire this engineer.
Michael, we want the three recommendations.
That's one, number one.
Thank you.
Hiring a, uh, a water engineer.
A water engineer, yeah.
It's not going to be an engineer.
Oh, what is it?
It's going to be, oh, probably a plumber.
Okay.
A leakage expert. A leakage expert, we're going to hire a leakage detection expert.
We know there's too many variations in our water...
Michael?
That's number one.
Thank you.
Will it be a monetary unit on the amount we're gonna spend for a leakage expert?
No, we have already in the budget $5,000, doesn't mean we're gonna spend the $5,000, but it's allocated.
We have to approve the amount?
No, we don't have to approve the amount, because we don't have...
We need to, we need to have the thing, two other beds.
No, no, what are the other two recommendations, Michael?
What's the other recommendation?
Michael, what are the other recommendations?
The other recommendation is to approve the water conservation flood prevention expo on 28th, in the grand lounge, in here there'll be a...
Michael, talk to Frances, she's asking you a direct question.
Frances, there will be, uh, proposing at, uh, February 28th...
What's number three?
Number three is, uh, the inspection of the units, to go forward with the inspection to save water on a voluntary basis.
Thank you, Michael, Michael, excuse me. Those are the recommendations, now we understand the recommendations.
Ever understood them?
Okay.
So who has made the motion? Michael?
I believe, Marvin, you made the motion?
Okay. I, I understand it's different, the wording is different now than what I, what I just... I, I was making a motion to inspect the units for possible leakage, not, not, I'm not limiting it to a voluntary, all units.
No, it's not limited, but at first, our initial approach will be voluntary.
That, that's fine, but all units must be inspected.
All the units must be inspected, eventually we have the right to do this in our condo docs, but for better maintenance, we can enter every unit, but we'll make special arrangements for those people who are paranoid.
But the motion is to inspect all units for water leakage problems.
Yes.
Who made the motion?
Uh, I did.
Marvin made the motion, and I seconded. Any opposition?
I'm not, I'm not opposed, as long as it's volunteer, I'm not gonna let anybody go in.
Well, initially it'll be volunteer, eventually it'll be compulsory, but we'll get to the first 90%.
No one's coming in, I'm trying to come in my unit.
Okay, well, we'll...
Okay, we're not asking you that, Terry. Any opposition? Any opposition?
Sure, I'm coming in my unit.
Terry, any opposition? Any opposition?
Yes.
Okay, then we'll call a vote.
Marvin Taub.
Yes.
Francis Moserouyus. Mark Richmond. Michael Schenckel.
Yes.
Polly Gosman.
Yes.
Gerald Mero.
Yes.
Terry Tercini.
No.
Sharon Creeseo.
Yes.
Charles McFatt.
Yes.
Motion carried, by vote eight to one.
Thank you. Uh, let's move on to number 12, please, the affirmation of suspension of rights of delinquent owners.
Under section 718 of the Florida statutes, the association may exercise its right to suspend barcode privileges and the right of those unit owners, their occupants, licensees, or invitees to use the common elements, common facilities, or other association property until the monetary obligation is paid in full. Further, the association would exercise its right to suspend the voting rights of said owners until their monetary obligation is paid in full. I'll list, now, I'll read the names of owners who are more than 90 days in arrears, and I want to comment that these owners have made no effort to cooperate with the association to make a payment plan or otherwise bring their obligation current.
You don't, you don't say their rights?
Anybody who has a payment plan, we do not interfere with their rights.
Is it necessary to read this list?
Yes, it is, it's the law.
You have to name, you have to name the person?
By law, this has to be done.
You have to give the person's name?
Okay, no.
You just said you're gonna give the person's name?
No, I didn't, I said, owners of these units. Bordeaux 2K, Idolvice 2C, Grenoble 1U, Heidelberg 2J, Interlaken 1U, Marseille 1X, Marseille 2N, Marseille 3B, Marseille 3J, Orleans 2L, Orleans 3E, Saint-Maurice 1Y, Saint-Maurice 2I, Saint-Maurice 2Z, Yorkshire 1W, Yorkshire 1X, Yorkshire 2K, Yorkshire 3X, Yorkshire 3Z, Zurich 1F. to suspend the rights and voting privileges of delinquent owners, and that written notice of that suspension be sent to each owner of each unit just listed now by the secretary.
I second. Terry Tercini seconded. Any opposition?
Of course.
Questions?
Yes, please. How many, how many can we have on this list?
Hold on, hold on, Jerry, did you have a question?
Yeah.
We'll go this way, okay? Go ahead, Jerry. Actually, I believe I was going to ask what Michael was gonna ask. Is this the first listing of these people?
No, this is the third list, no, what do you mean, the first listing of these people?
Uh, we have, we have other people...
Yes, we have previously listed other owners.
Can you just tell me how many, uh, how many people we already have?
I can't, I don't have that number for you right now.
How many are we now putting on?
Twenty.
Twenty, and you have no recollection of how many are on the list?
Approximately.
Uh, no, not even approximately, but I do have an accurate list, because we use it for the election of the, of the, of the board.
And if I understood you correctly, these people have been approached, my question is, how have they been approached? Have they been approached by board members, or they've been approached by lawyers?
Office staff and lawyers.
Office staff and lawyers, that's their only communication?
It's a lot.
Well, it's, it is what it is.
That's the process.
It is what it is, that's the process.
That's the process.
And there's nobody, a fellow owner, a fellow owner has never talked to them.
We have no authorization to do that.
Yeah, well, I, I believe, because I, I remember when I was involved in the board before, I had an opportunity to talk to a number of these owners, uh, they came to me, and we were able to get, accomplish some things. If you're talking to lawyers, uh, there's really not too much you can accomplish, they just want what they want, and they threaten you with what's going to happen to you.
Jerry, you're, you're, I don't, I don't know what this is, you have this bug in your head about lawyers, but it's really not, uh...
Frances, you have your idea about lawyers and I have mine, you're entitled to yours and I'm entitled to mine, mine's based on my experience, yours is based on yours. So you don't have to tell me about lawyers.
You're right.
I know enough, I'm old enough to know about lawyers, right?
Thank you.
I, I'm only suggesting, okay, that these owners should be talked to by other owners. I think that there's a equality there, that sometimes, I'm not saying in all cases, but I know in my experience in a number of cases, we have been able, uh, they, they have been able to make deals.
Jerry, um, you have a very valid, sorry? Hold on, let me...
All right.
Hold on, just for a second, I just want place, all right? Thank you. Jerry, I think that is, uh, I think what we need to do, if you'd like, we'll make that list available to you, and if you'd like to contact these people directly...
Thank you.
You will absolutely have every right to, because Jerry does have a very good idea, and there's no reason why any of us shouldn't talk to these people, and maybe extend a helping hand.
Thank you.
Okay.
We've been cautioned not to do that because we don't follow any credit act of that way.
Yes. If we're not a good idea.
You, you were cautioned by lawyers?
Attorneys.
Yeah. All right, well, I would, I would like to talk to an attorney.
Jerry, I think we're gonna give you every opportunity to follow this path, okay? Maureen, what did you just say?
We've been cautioned not to speak to the unit owners, because we don't, we're not a credit agency or anything, we don't follow any credit act.
We meaning whom?
The association, we send letters, we don't call and say, hey, you're late.
We're not talking about, this has nothing to do with the association. This happens to be an individual, another owner, who's approaching, a distressed owner, and saying, hey, let's sit down, and I may have a plan that's gonna help you, correct, Jerry?
Correct.
That's it, this is not an association, this has nothing to do with the board, Jerry just wants to have the opportunity to approach these people, that's it. Yes, Steve?
We're all entitled to have a list.
Yes, of course, yeah, it's a publisher, a come and get a list and we'll provide it for you.
My opinion is that once a delinquent...
You're out of order, Steve.
You recognize me?
No, I did recognize him.
You did?
I did.
Go ahead, Steve.
It is just my opinion that once a unit owner receives their 90-day notice and makes it very clear to the association that they have no interest in paying up or cooperating, we don't need to go and kiss their ass and go knocking on doors.
Steve, this has nothing to do with the association, this is nothing to do with the board.
You're a delinquent owner, okay, very good point.
Okay, this, what, what Jerry is, is, is saying is that, as a unit owner here, he would like to approach this unit and say, hey, I can help you out, maybe, that's it?
But how does he find out who these people are?
It's public record, uh, uh, I'm sorry, it's public record.
I can just add one comment, buying a property in lieu of foreclosure and a short sale, the association benefits the greatest.
That's right.
So we should encourage that.
Absolutely.
So there's not, absolutely, everything that we can do to keep people on the roll and keep having units paying monthly assessment and maintenance, there's nothing wrong with that, and we must extend all possibilities to all owners, whether they're distressed or not distressed, point five. We need a vote on this, do we not?
Yes.
Okay.
You don't need to vote, anybody can talk to any unit owner.
No, we gotta vote on that.
No, we're talking, we need to, we need to talk on number 12.
The suspension of rights...
You just said it's not gonna be efficient, but if you vote, doesn't that make...
The, the motion on the table is the suspension of rights of these owners who are 90 days old.
We're just, we're just affirming, voting the affirmation of the delinquent owners, that's it, has nothing to do with Jerry's comments. Uh, did we have a motion on the table, Frances? Who, and I seconded?
It's been seconded by...
Any opposition?
Terry said.
Terry, Terry, any opposition? Terry. Okay, uh, Maureen, who's gonna be talking about the concrete reinforcement behind Idolvice and Zurich?
George.
George, please come to, uh, up front.
They all have the votes, George.
You've got, uh, 16 seconds.
16 seconds. Uh, we're talking in particular one areas behind the elevations and the sewage buildings, you see in the back, uh, when you, when you walk outside to the building, in the back, we have one, um, uh, a wood, uh, it's like a little fence, it's completely destroyed, the wood, we need, we won't make it a metal, uh, railing in the back, it's gonna help to support somebody coming from outside in the wheelchair, or something happened where a load dropped into the, the canal. Last job you have to do, and it costs $300 each unit, we need six, six units, and put in the back, that's what we're talking about.
What is the cost of this?
$300 labor.
$1,800.
$1,800.
$1,800 total.
Because that's the total cost of the whole project?
Yes.
Materials and labor?
No, material we have, that's just the labor on it, we have material, we don't have to buy anything, it's the labor and welding, I was including the material welding to go and use it.
But this is a safety issue, so...
Yes.
This needs to be addressed, and, uh, thank you, George.
This is a safety issue, uh, and really, I don't see a lot of discussion on this.
Can you at least tell me what the safety issue is?
Sure, it's, it's really what it is, it's a concrete barrier, so people don't fall into the canal when they come out of the building, all right?
Not the wall?
No, not the wall, it's the barrier.
No barrier.
Okay? Okay, uh, any op, is there, uh, is there, uh, a motion on the table? Motion on the table?
Yes.
Okay, Terry?
I'll second.
Frances second, any opposition? Carry. Okay, uh, let's move on, I guess this is something that has been long discussed, and tonight, uh, we're gonna have an opportunity to vote on the board, that is the dedication of the gym to the late Howard Goldman. Is there any discussion on, on the table? Marvin, please.
Just a simple comment, um, there was no one in the village who was more passionate about health and fitness than Howard. I knew him since I moved here in 2000, uh, 2004, uh, and, and all the reports I got from him, about him, is all throughout the decades that he lived here, he was focused and dedicated to having our, our, uh, gym, uh, a top-notch, a quality facility. Um, so I, I suggest naming the space the Howard Goldman Fitness Center. Uh, for me, it's not just a no-brainer, it's the right thing to do. Uh, and I'm going to recommend, want a committee, a committee be formed to pick a suitable plaque. The committee chair, chairperson should pick one director as a board liaison, just to communicate what's going on, um, and establish a dollar limit, for example, $100, uh, for not to exceed that amount, the cost of the plaque. Um, I know the person who has been very vocal in this and very active was Dick Goodheart. Dick, are you still here?
No, I am.
Hi there. Um, and I'm gonna nominate Dick Kirk, Dick Goodheart as the committee chair to perform this function.
I put it on the agenda three times, who's more vocal?
Are there any other comments? Mr. Goodheart, do you accept, uh, the nomination?
Yes.
Then, uh, okay, you're appointed.
Do we have to pass naming?
Okay, now we need to approve the motion?
Okay, I'll repeat it. The motion is to name the space the Howard Goldman Fitness Center. To, um, have Dick Goodheart be the chair of the committee to, uh, pick a suitable design of the plaque, uh, and establish a dollar limit of $100.
$100?
And Dick, who would you like as your, um...
Yes.
Um, I actually was trying to get this on, to pass, like, last year and even the year before that, and I thought a good play on words would be, since his name is Goldman, and there's Gold's Gym, it should be called just Goldman's Gym, and then on the plaque, it could say Howard Goldman, et cetera, et cetera, but it should be...
Well, we, the, the, the motion on the table is gonna be called the Howard Goldman Fitness Center, that's the dedication.
Okay, just a suggestion.
So I have the motion by Marvin, is there a second?
Second.
Mark Richmond seconds. Any opposition? Motion carried. We'll move on to the dedication of this room, the large card room, to the late Phoebe Cullin. Any discussion?
I'm the, um, I asked that this, uh, I had it be put on the agenda, that ever since I moved here, in the four years, uh, she's, she gave relentless service to the community, especially in this room, and, uh, she was willing to work with any board, any board member, regardless of who they were, or what, uh, you know, what anybody thought of anybody, she was neutral, she just wanted to work for the community, and that's why I asked it to be put on the agenda, uh, to name this room, this space in her honor.
You gonna make a motion, Terry?
I make a motion to, uh, approve the dedication of the, uh, large card room to the memory of Phoebe Cullin.
Uh, is there gonna be a flag?
$100 limit, flag, I guess it would be the same thing.
$50? Please, check with her, choose that one, too?
Who's gonna chair this? Terry Tercini will chair it.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any opposition?
I'd like to make a comment on it.
Comment, accepted.
In the years that I've known Phoebe, um, I've never heard anybody say to me the kind of positive comments that Terry is making about Phoebe. Um, and before I, before I feel comfortable naming this space after anybody, I would like to get feedback from the other unit owners here. Honestly, I've, I've, my experience of Phoebe and feedback that I've gotten from other unit owners has not been all positive. Um, so before I vote for this, uh, I would want at least to get feedback from other unit owners, because I'm particularly not comfortable, uh, so I'm going to make a motion to table this pending, um, to, to table it, personally, I'm just to get...
If you want some feedback now, I'll give you some.
Me too.
You want it now, you don't have to... You want it now, you don't have to table anything, right?
I'm...
Let's hear it.
So first motion is to table, Terry's motion.
Do we have discussion about table?
Not during table.
Not during table. So...
The motion is to table pending obtaining member reaction.
And there's no discussion on the table, is that what you said, Francis?
We need to vote, we need to vote. We don't even have a second yet. We have one person.
I don't mind. You're going to put it on the table.
You were pushing for the vote.
No, I wasn't.
Yes, you always said we need a vote. We only have a motion to table it.
Is there a second?
I'll second this.
Thank you. Any opposition?
Opposition to the motion.
Yeah, motion to table.
Absolutely.
All right, now is the motion to table.
I oppose the motion to table.
Then we'll have to call the roll.
You're a vote, you're terrific.
We'll have to call the roll. Excuse me, we'll have to call the roll.
This is on the motion to table, Phoebe Cohen. Marvin Tau?
Yes.
Francis Mesiro, yes. Mark Richmond?
No.
Michael Schenkel?
Yeah.
Collette Goslin?
Yes.
Gerald Muro?
No.
Terry Tercigni?
No.
Sharon Trapicio?
No.
Joseph Patrick?
No.
Failed by five to four.
Okay, discussion on the motion?
Discussion on the motion to dedicate the large card room.
Right, since I'm on the board, we get to speak first, but I'm going to give the floor to you.
Wait, wait, was it tabled?
No, no.
The motion is now...
I don't want to speak?
Hold on, sorry. No, not yet.
Okay.
Yeah, but we have to go down the table. Sharon, do you have anything to comment?
No, I'm open to hearing what everybody has to say.
Terry, do you have anything to say? Okay.
I said what I felt.
Marvin, you said what you said. Okay. I have no opposition. Francis?
I think I'd like the membership to have a say.
I don't feel strongly. I knew Phoebe, I thought she was a lovely lady, reminded her. I know she played a lot of cards here and that's about it.
Boy, well, I'm going to say something if the board's speaking first, so can I say something?
Michael, do you have anything to say?
I knew Phoebe for a few years.
It's not on, Michael.
I, you know, I don't know, there might be somebody more desirable out there that would choose from? I don't know. I mean, she was very old when I knew her and...
Why, you're young? Are you young, Mike?
No.
Collette, do you have anything to say? Jerry, were you finished with the...
Yeah, I knew Phoebe and I saw her when I was passing by with the bingo. She was always there doing the bingo. And I knew her as a board member also. She was on the board, I remember, when Gloria was involved. And I was really impressed with her, the way, with her honesty and her way of cutting to the...
Please, quiet.
Getting right down to the crux of a matter. You didn't have to agree with her, but there was no baloney with her. She felt what she felt, she had good reason for, and you had to admire that. She wasn't a youngster, as was pointed out. But she was, when we had parties here, she was an owner. But she was standing up there and giving out food and she was working her little rear end off. So, I mean, it's a good image. I think she's a good image. You didn't have to agree with her. I didn't always agree with her. I once went around for, I wanted to have signatures for the ombudsman to conduct the election in 2010. And, you know, I had to really sell her on that, okay? And she did finally, she did finally sign. But she was very smart in her way and very honest and you really, you really felt you were talking to somebody that you could count on, so...
Why should she have her name on the plaque? That's the question of the...
Well, because she spent a lot of time here doing good things.
That's fine, well, that's good, that's...
In this particular room.
That's good, thank you.
And I picture her right now, right in front of the food. Right, I think about food.
We're going to get to you, folks. I know where you are, keep your hands down, please. Put your hands down. Are we finished here, comment, Frank? Now you can talk.
Thank you.
You need a mic, Frank?
No. Jerry, you said about all of it that I would want to say. I know Phoebe quite well. There are times when she was a little bit grumpy and who here is not grumpy at times? Baloney. But she was always ready to jump in and do her share to help everybody in the community to get together and to know one another better. She ran all the bus fairs, to the gambling casinos. She did it all, never asked for anybody to help. Put her name on that plaque, she deserves it, God rest her soul.
Here, here.
Steve?
This issue of Phoebe Cohen is a little bit different from the issue of Howard Goldman. Howard Goldman, for instance, has served this community...
We're not talking about Howard Goldman, we've already decided. Discuss Phoebe.
I'm trying to make a point and I have a right to do that. Howard Goldman has served this community since the 1970s and helped many, many people with problems in their lives. Now, I don't really object to the concept of having something named for Phoebe Cohen. What I do object to is starting a trend here and naming something after every elderly person that passes away, because there are going to be lots of us. Is there going to be a Terry and Michelle Tercigni Memorial Garden? Are we going to name, are we going to name this room down the hall the Steve Serkin Security Center? Many, many, many people through the years have done so much to help this community in different ways. We can't go around naming something after everyone. Please think about that, thank you.
Why not? Let's sell wall space, how's that? We'll sell wall space for plaques. For anyone who wants a plaque in their name, you want to pay $500, what a plaque up for.
Put my name on the chair.
Steve, that's a very good point. Thank you very much. Any other comments before we go? Lisa? Hold it, hold it. I had somebody before you, George. Go.
There you go. Okay, sorry, I've had a chest injury, so I'm having a hard time talking here. I knew Phoebe for a long time and also volunteered with her in various social capacities. But every time but once, he was rude to me. Okay? I can use some very fancy words that explain that, but she was not friendly with me. And if the majority says, yes, let's do this center, that's one thing, but I do object to it. Thank you.
Listen, everybody forget what she did in the past. Only person know how much he did for the community, Phoebe. I was working, we had all the time, we had parties. I'm here 27 years in this community. I know 27 years, he was sitting with us and doing the parties, he helped him and feeding all the person. Not only 100 people, 150 people, he was sitting with us. The plaque they want to doing right is right. He may, he give you a lot of help to the community. Thank you.
Dan?
Are we ready for, are we... Dan, please?
If we name this room after Phoebe Cohen, will that be into perpetuity or in the future could that be rescinded and named after somebody else?
I guess that's going to be a decision for future boards, Dan. Thank you. Are we ready to vote? Are we ready to vote? Okay. Is, do we have a motion on the table?
Yeah, motion to approve dedication of the large card room to the late Phoebe Cohen and Terry Tercigni would chair the committee to get a suitable plaque at a cost of no more than $100.
Do we have a second?
Yeah. Mark Richmond.
Mark Richmond. Can we, any opposition?
Yes.
Call the roll, please.
Marvin Tau?
No.
Francis Mesiro, no. Mark Richmond?
Yes.
Michael Schenkel?
Yes.
Collette Goslin?
Yes.
Gerald Muro?
Yes.
Terry Tercigni?
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you. Sharon Trapicio?
Yes.
Joseph Patrick?
Yes.
Motion passed by the 72.
Thank you. We're going to move, yeah?
I have something I'd like to bring up.
Sure, go ahead.
I would like to put a motion on the table to table the last two items until the next meeting, considering it's 10:15 and these items will probably generate a lot of discussion. And we've already been here over two and a half hours. I know, but we got dogs and we got...
I'll second the motion.
And we got speed bump installation, so...
Use the dogs as the speed bumps.
There's a comment, there's a comment on the table. Joe? Joe, can you stand up and repeat that, please?
I said use the dogs as the speed bumps. That's your motion?
Leave the dogs alone.
Is there a, Francis, did you second that?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Any opposition? Any opposition that we adjourn? That we table the two, last two items?
Yes.
Yes. Jerry, it's 10:15.
Listen, I came from Miami Beach to be here and I'm going back to Miami Beach. You only have to go to your place, okay? I have to get up and I want to go.
Hold on, guys, guys, guys. Let's not argue. There is a motion and we'll talk about it. We'll vote. No, I said we'll vote.
Marvin Tau?
Where are we voting on?
To table the rest of the two items. Francis Mesiro, yes. Mark Richmond?
It's 10:15.
Michael Schenkel? A table and discussion of the dogs and...
No. Charlie, it'll be, that's going to be four.
Collette Goslin? Gerald Muro?
No.
Terry Tercigni?
Yes.
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 Sharon Trapicio?
Yes.
Joseph Patrick? Motion passed by a vote of 6 to 3.
Leading adjourned.